Hi, we're going to call to order and may I have Nikki call the roll please?
Mrs. Applebaum?
Here.
Mr. Applebaum?
Here.
Mrs. Hopper?
Here.
Mr. Jacob?
Here.
Mrs. Mogerman?
Here.
Dr. Seagertino?
Here.
Mrs. Feldman?
Here. 3.0 call for closed session, none 4.0. May I have the audience please join us in rising for the pledge of allegiance. Are there any citizen statements? Okay. 6.0 approval of agenda for September 30th tax rate hearing. May I have a motion in a second to approve tonight's agenda for the tax rate hearing is scheduled for Tuesday, September 30th, 2014. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries 7-0. Items for review and/or action, 7.01. Hearing on proposed tax rate, I'd like to call on Patty Bedborough, our new CFO. Welcome to your first Parkway tax rate hearing. We know it's been a great experience.
A wonderful learning experience, I must say. Thank you very much for this opportunity to present to you our tax rates. First, a brief overview of what we will be going through. The purpose of the public hearing is actually based on state statute. A public hearing must be offered prior to the setting of tax rates. We're going to go through the Parkway 2014 assessed values, our proposed rates, the impact on the average homeowner in our district, impact on our district budget. We're going to review what we have as a voluntary rollback and then we'll have a time for taking questions. So first, just a review of our changes in our assessed valuation from last year to this year in what's classified as our class of property. So it says net of TIF, so that's tax increment financing. So that normally is a reduction in our assessed valuations. Last year by class, we had a total assessed valuation of $4,131,414,810. This year, we have a slight increase, a .6% overall, in assessed valuation of $4,156,208,650. The largest increase has been in our personal property, followed by an increase in our residential property, slight increase in our commercial property, and a very slight increase in our agricultural property. When we look at our assessed valuation, the changes, to further break that down, part of that is based on an increase from new construction, so in residential, $9,214,000; new commercial construction, $10,213,000; agricultural new construction, $4,400; personal property, $12,271,000. When we look at this, that's a total of new construction of $31,706,000. This is partially offset from our revaluation of existing property. So part of this is from our protested tax settlements that have happened throughout the county, and especially, this is the impact here in our district. So for a commercial property assessment, reductions, $7,675,000 for the last tax year. Residential reassessment, we actually had a gain of $834,000. And agricultural assessment reductions of $67,690. So the total combined of the new construction, less the reductions, is $24,793,000. When we look at what types of property make up our assessed valuation, residential property is certainly our largest stakeholder. 62.18% of our total property is held in residential real estate. Personal property makes up 12.97%, and commercial property makes up 24.83% of our total assessed valuation, followed by agricultural, which is a .01% overall. Our proposed tax rates are not only by class of property, i.e. meaning the residential, commercial, agricultural, or personal property, but it's also based on by fund. So which fund it is placed in are financial statements: the general fund, the special revenue or teachers' fund, the debt service fund, or the capital projects fund. As you recall, the voters passed Proposition R in 2007. Since that time, we have had a voluntary rollback in our tax rate for our residential rate. In our current recommended rate, we have a rollback of .2383, so 23.83 cents, or approximately $6.2 million. You also know from the review of all of our financial statements from the last couple years, we've had a large number of protested tax settlements with St. Louis County. Some of these date back to as far as 2005. Last year, we submitted recoupment requests and took one-half of the commercial rate, or 24.05 cents, of a rate increase which represented approximately one-half of the loss in commercial properties for 1213. This year, we're proposing that we take the second portion of that commercial property recoupment in the amount of 25.64 cents, or .2564. We do have approximately 24.82 cents, or .2482, with the residential rate in recoupment that we have not taken, that accounts to about $6.4 million. And recall, this is in addition to our rollback, but at this time, we do not want to take that recoupment. This year's recoupment provided additional funding for personal property rates, and our recommendation is that we roll up our property rate by five cents, or .05 this year, and reserving the additional 17.54 cents, approximately $946,000, for one of the next two years. When we look at the impact of the protested tax settlements, we want to compare that not only to what we budgeted and allocated for last year, but also this year in this upcoming budget. Normally, we budget with a collection rate of about 97%. Last year, with all the protested tax settlements, we actually collected at a rate of about 95%, so falling 2% lower than our anticipated amount. The recoupment in the past year was offset by continued protested tax settlement. The projection makes it appear as though we anticipate a large increase in our budget, but we already anticipate that some of that will be offset by additional settlements. This impact may continue for a few more years. We need to continue to calculate the recoupment and roll up our commercial rate in order to regain those lost revenues. The 2013-2014 estimated taxes levied were $171,474,251, but our actual taxes collected were $168,557,361, so that's net of all of our fees and the protested tax payback. So that was an actual reduction of $2.9 million. Our proposed operating levy rates by property class are as follows. You see there the 2013 rates compared to the 2014 rates with just a slight increase. Our residential rate remains flat at $3.73.43; our commercial rate at $4.6393, a slight increase of .0869, or 8.69 cents; our personal property rate, an increase of five cents, or .05 dollars; agricultural rate remaining the same, and that ends with a blended rate increase of .0274 dollars, or 2.74 cents. These rates above do not include debt service, these are operating, and they include 25.64 cents attributable to the recoupment for the prior year commercial appeals, and five cents for the personal property recoupment. So when we look at the rates by fund, we see a slight increase also in the general fund of .0139, or 1.39 cents. Special revenue fund, it increases by .0135, or 1.35 cents, for an overall operating rate increase of 2.74 cents, or .0274. Our debt service rate remains unchanged at 34 cents, and our total blended rate becomes $4.30.62, an increase of the .0274. What does this mean to the average homeowner? It's essentially an increase of .09%. When we combine both the operating residential rate plus the debt service rate, our rate changes from 4.0779 to 4.1279, or a five cent increase over last year. The average homeowner, their home market value is about $250,000. In assessed valuation, this becomes $47,500. That property tax assessed on the average home remains consistent year-over-year at the $1,1,935. The average car is valued at approximately $15,000. Assessed valuation on that car equates to $4,950. There's a slight increase of $2 year-over-year on that car, so overall, the average homeowner would have a $2 total year impact on their tax rate. When we compare the prior year total property tax revenues versus what is proposed here, we have an increase of approximately $2,131,138, or approximately 1.24%. The property tax levy, the $171,474,257, is the amount that was levied, that was not the amount that was collected. So that may appear that it's a large increase, but we know that the $173,173 million will be impacted most likely by additional protests. When we look at the total budgeted property tax revenues versus the taxes that are levied, we have a budgeted revenue amount of $173,198,144. Our total property taxes to be levied, it was $173,605,395, a change of $407,251, or a .24% increase. When we look at comparison of our residential rate, our total residential rate, which includes our operating levy plus our 34-cent debt levy, last year, we ranked 19 of 22 area school districts in St. Louis County. This year, I have surveyed the school districts that levy close to our amount, and we fall right in the same range. So it's anticipated that we will be ranked at 19 of 22 also this year. Any questions?
We didn't think she could get away with no questions.
Well, you've been very good in explaining not only tonight, but in previous meetings that we've had with you to try to arrive at this, and we know it's not an easy process. The state could be a lot more transparent. How good do you feel about this in relation then to what we have stated as our budget?
You mean as far as collection, will we actually gain that additional revenue? You know, I'll feel more comfortable once December hits, the end of December, when we look into January too, to see how those initial collections versus the new protests, I'll have a better feel. If it becomes a 95% collection rate again, we'll essentially be break even with last year, or a possible negative. So I'm hoping that the settlements actually decrease, but that's really just a hope.
The last question is, next year is the reevaluation of property, right?
Correct.
And is anything you can tell, do you think that it's, I mean, the economy's a little bit better, but can we tell our property value is going to be a little bit higher?
Well, we're hopeful of that. We can't control what the assessor does, but we also know that real estate market has become, you know, very, very active and vibrant. You know, homes are staying on the market for less days, and essentially, it is a seller's market, from what we've heard. We also know that we do have some new construction projects that are going around, and that are included in our district, so we're hoping that we have some good values from our new construction.
Yeah, I was just looking for some things that might offset some of those protested taxes. Thank you.
Any indication on where they might fall with regards to all those protested assessments?
No, they have settled approximately, I believe the number was one-third of the current cases. They did settle larger companies first, so those items that are still under protest are smaller items, but they do add up to some pretty large dollars.
...a real estate appraiser, and he started a side business where he helps people protest their, yeah, and I understand his business is thriving, unfortunately for us, but he's very busy with it.
And that doesn't only hurt school districts, it hurts the fire district, library district, et cetera too. So we're not the only taxing entity that that, the lowering of that property value impacts.
The increase in personal property is the sale of cars primarily?
Primarily. It could be from commercial property too, where they have purchased more equipment and such too, but we don't get a breakdown to that detail. I can certainly find that detail for you.
No, you don't have to, but I'm just curious about that. How does this impact the reserves in trying to make up the deficit there?
Well, we're hoping that if it comes through higher than the budgeted, so the $400,000 essentially higher than budget, then that money would go to the reserves. We would not budget to spend an increase in expenses to offset that.
Anybody else?
I just want to compliment, I know hard, I've watched Patty the last couple of weeks. It's been, I know for her, a challenge, but I think she's grasped the Parkway financial situation quite well, and I think presented tonight a very good picture, and I know that she's going to continually learn more, and I think is really, I think, has a great opportunity here to help us, because I think she can tell she's a good student of finances, and I think we learned a great deal from her, and I think she's going to continually look to improve our situation as best she can within both the operations, but looking bigger and broader in terms of what we might do, and to make sure our picture, our financial picture is, remains strong. So I thank you very much, Patty.
Thank you.
I want to thank you for all the time you've taken the last several weeks explaining the intricacies of all of this to school board members who, most of us don't have a financial background, and I think we all can say that we have, you know, somewhat of an understanding of all this material, and we want to thank you for that. And now I think we're going to call one more time for citizen statements, if there are any. Okay, thank you very much.
Thank Brian and the rest of your staff.
8.0 call for special meeting, none. 9.0 call for closed session, none. 10.0 recess, 11.0 closed meeting. May I have a motion in a second to adjourn the tax rate hearing?
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we're going to close that portion of our meeting. We're going to take a five-minute break, and we will return at 7 o'clock with our regular meeting.
What happened to our scouts?
I guess they've not been.
Yeah, they're not there.
Oh, well.
Okay, we already did call this meeting to order so that we could go into closed and we stopped right before the pledge of allegiance. So now that we have such a big crowd, we are going to pledge our allegiance again.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
There are no special recognitions tonight. Additions, corrections, and modifications to the agenda. Addendum to eleven point oh two, approval of personnel items. There is an addition of a resignation. Modifications to eleven point zero five, approval of resolution to reset two thousand fourteen tax rate levy. And twelve point zero one, adoption of tax rate for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen. The changes are due to updates from the state auditor's office. Seven point zero citizen statements, there are none. Eight point zero approval of agenda, September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen. May please have a motion and a second to approve the agenda for the regular meeting of the Board of Education, scheduled for Tuesday, September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. Nine point zero, there are no resolutions tonight. Ten point zero communications. Ten point zero one, calendar of meetings. The next regular board meeting is scheduled for Wednesday, October twenty second, two thousand fourteen, at seven P M. At Central Middle School with an anticipated closed session at six o'clock P M. Ten point zero two, board liaison reports. Anyone?
Well, I had the pleasure of attending the Parkway alumni game. It was the last game of the season. And I got the pleasure of watching Alber throw out the first pitch. And Dr. Marty was down on the field with them, so who says there's no perks of being superintendent? But it was really good, it was a really great game and it was really neat to see Al being recognized like that.
Most of thousands.
Yeah, that's what Jan said. Oh, and this was probably mentioned last meeting that I wasn't here, but I gotta, I gotta say something about that Spark Academy. That was, it was really neat watching those kids get up there and do those pitches and do a better job than many, many adults that I've seen. Give presentations and that, none of them seemed that nervous. I was, it blew me away, so it was really neat. They were really inspiring.
If I can just jump on and add to that, I think the credit goes to, a lot of the credit goes to our Parkway teachers for having the kids get up and give public presentations from such an early age that it is just like talking one-on-one to them. They don't seem to get nervous at all. They're perfectly comfortable in front of a crowd. And this was a crowd of about a hundred plus. Business leaders, community members, and various other kind of important people, but it didn't seem to faze them at all. They were fantastic.
And I would agree with that one hundred percent. The three, the three board members were there and we were able to sit on the front row. We weren't judges. They had judges that were, I guess mentors as well as true business people, entrepreneurs, and they asked some tough questions and the kids responded very well. And for the little bit of time that they had to prepare, I thought it was marvelous. And, and they just, I expect that some of them will be very successful. Appreciate Maryville too. They presented a check for some seed money to the one that gave the best presentation, $100. And that happened to be a perforated straw that you can put into your popcorn and then the butter just flows out where it needs to. Because I always have to heat it and then I give it to Carmen because she doesn't like butter. This, this way it'll be my popcorn.
It's proprietary.
Very, very professional and some of the work they'd done ahead of time to protect themselves was, was nice to see. I attended the ballgame once again. Parkway Central won the Mayor's Cup from Parkway West. But, so we just want to congratulate them and it was a well-fought campaign. And they did a very good job. Recognize one of our, the thing in the paper says Parkway Transportation Head receives special needs training. Now, before you read something into that, the training program offers a rigorous curriculum designed to enhance the skills and knowledge of transporters working with special needs students. Parkway joins eighty-three other school districts across the country in completing the select specialized training. Will Rosa is one of the nine transportation specialists receiving the endorsement at this time. And he had some nice things to say about it. And it's just one more way that we show that we care about all and trying to meet the needs of every student that we have. So I just wanna, he's not here to receive that and that's good because I didn't want his head to grow.
Mrs. Hopper and I met with Dr. Watson just a little over a week ago. And I walked in and there were a group of people standing in line. I didn't know what was going on. And she said, I think, you know, we just want you to, to meet everybody. So Debbie came in and we were introduced to the Student Services staff. And that was really a nice touch to really see the administrators as well as their assistants and all. We appreciate that very much. It was really, really great of you to do that. She presented us with a packet, starting out with a Happy New Year from Student Services. I'd like to go through details of this packet, but it's something I, I hope that you get a copy of. Everyone should because it really covers what is happening in Student Services and it's all phenomenal. One of the highlights that I thought is great is how much the registration process has been streamlined. Basically, starting with an online process where parents go on, online and get a lot of the minutia done before they actually come and meet with the registrars and then present their documentation. Also have a E S O L staff there that if a child has a need, it's determined then rather than later on in the school. Along with the fact that it really helps to get the immunizations all up to date as well. So there's a wealth of information. We appreciate it very much and the time that you gave us. It's fun just to sit and talk and ask questions. We appreciate it very much. Thank you.
All right, I think we're doing this, I have a slightly different format this year. Our board subcommittee reports now, I think the minutes are taken, they're posted online. So all of our subcommittees have met, I believe, since our last board meeting. So we had the, the T L A Subcommittee meeting on September sixteenth. The Human Resources Finance Subcommittee on September twenty second. And as Sam said, the Student Services Subcommittee on September twenty third. And all of those minutes are posted online. But if anybody would like to make any comments in particular about the meeting, say attended, now's the time for that.
I'd just say if you're curious, ask Lisa about the bedpan in her office and the fly swatter. That's all I'm gonna say.
Okay. Any else?
I would just like to say when Chris, Beth and I met with Amy and Patty. This was our first meeting with them on their own and they did a great job. We really appreciate you taking the time to answer all of our questions and, and it was well thought out. We, we really got a lot out of it. So thank you both.
And I think we all learned a lot from our, being able to ask questions in a small group setting in our subcommittees. And then we can share the notes with everybody else. So we're all really getting, getting a lot out of that. Thanks Keith for, for bringing that to us because that's something we didn't do before you came.
I'm excited about it because I think there's a, there's a great opportunity for, for you as a board to see other administrators, other leaders, and all kinds of leaders from Sam's point of view. But, but also for, for our administrators to really work with you and, and to share deeper knowledge and have a chance for you to, to really participate in some upfront work. So it's kind of getting to where I, I had the vision and thank you for hanging in there. And thanks to administrators for doing that as well. I'm really, really pleased with that. It's great communication.
And also thank you to the administrative assistants for helping us out by taking the notes. Because I used to try to jot down some notes as we were talking, but you can't really type and listen fully. So I appreciate everybody helping us out with that.
Just a one, just a quick comment. If you didn't know, Amy is all about process and data. And she certainly gave us a lot that day and, and we can see that we're, we're headed in the right direction. We got a great H R person there for, for Parkway.
All right. Before we go on, I, I noticed some people in the audience that I think may be students. If you guys are students, could you please stand up and tell us where you're from and why you're here? Thank you. I see you have an iPad there. No. Great. Is this the first time you all have been to board meetings? Yeah, no? You've, you enjoy, you enjoy him so much, you just can't stay away. We'll welcome, we're glad you're here. Did I get everybody? Oh, hi. For which school? Okay, great. We'll welcome. Okay, great. We're glad somebody came. Eleven point zero, action items. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented in the September thirtieth, two thousand fourteen board materials?
So moved.
Second? Oh, somebody seconded. Okay. Is there anything to be pulled to action or closed? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Motion carries seven zero. Action items twelve point zero one. Adoption of the two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen tax rate. Patty Bedborough, CFO. If anyone has any question, any further questions for Patty before we take our vote. You've answered all our questions. That being said, may I have a motion in a second that the Board of Education adopt the tax rates by category as presented and the blended tax rate for the Parkway School District for two thousand fourteen, two thousand fifteen in the amount of four dollars point thirty sixty-two to be distributed with a special revenue fund rate of two point five seven eight zero, general fund rate of one point three eight eight two, capital projects rate of zero, and debt service fund rate of thirty-four cents.
Second.
Roll call, please Nikki.
Mrs. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mr. Applebaum?
Yes.
Mrs. Hopper?
Yes.
Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mrs. Moverman?
Yes.
Dr. Sierra Tito?
Yes.
Mrs. Feldman?
Yes, thank you. The motion carries seven zero. Thirteen point zero, thanks Patty. Thirteen point zero, policy review, there is none at this time. Fourteen point zero reports. Middle school evaluation preliminary conversation. Like to call Dr. Lisa Meredith, Assistant Superintendent of Teaching, Learning, and Accountability, and Dr. Nathan Tyson. I think Lisa, you're gonna introduce Dr. Tyson? Okay.
Vice President Jacobs, members of the board, Dr. Marty, Ms. Stover. Tonight, we are approaching program evaluation in a, not a new approach, but a, we're applying that process to a, in a new way, beginning with looking at our levels of education through a program evaluation lens. In the past, our program evaluations were related to curricular areas or departments. However, recently, schools have been added. About every four years, we will look at each of the levels. So we have historically looked at early childhood, but we've never extended that to look at elementary, middle, and high school. So we will begin that approach this year by embarking on a middle school study. This year, we will look at the middle school model and practices and we will study them as, through the program evaluation process. We are so thankful that Dr. Courtney Jaeger, so fun to say that, I had to remember. And Dr. Michael Bogus, Curriculum Coordinator for the middle level, and then also one of our fine middle school principals are co-leading the work for this program evaluation. And thankfully, we have Dr. Nathan Tyson, who will lead us through that process and through the data collection to ensure that we have a valid process and data collection process. To give you a little bit, bit of background, in nineteen ninety-four, Parkway adopted the middle school philosophy and shifted all Parkway Junior High Schools, which were seventh and eighth grade at that time, to a middle school model of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. In two thousand ten, eleven school year, middle schools changed from site-based schedules to a district-wide eight-period day. The new schedule included, in the eight-period day, double communication arts classes at all grade levels, core teams of five teachers, physical education every day, a new sixth-grade exploratory class called Future Pathways, and a middle school district course guide. Time has come for us to revisit these changes, as well as some of our other practices that we have implemented over the years. While the changes listed above, or that I just listed, have helped shape our current middle school practices, there have been other new developments over the last four years, such as a later start time and formalizing professional learning communities across the district. Program evaluations are designed to learn from our past and to improve our practices by studying how we measure Parkway and how it is performing against our district goals and objectives. To complete this process, we will collect new survey data. We will analyze other new data points, but we will also take this as an opportunity to synthesize information from other program evaluations. So looking at our E L A program evaluation and what did middle school say in that? Looking at our math program evaluation, which is happening this year as well, but pulling out the math portion of that. Looking at our recent science evaluation and what did the middle school study say, the middle school portion of that say? So part of it will be combining some existing data that we have, but looking through it, through the lens of middle school as opposed to the K twelve of that content. So that is a new approach and I think it will really help us think in both ways through our program evaluation now. Thinking about our vertical, but also zoning in. So with that, I'm excited that work has started with the middle school study. And Dr. Tyson is here to give us an update of where we've been, to share with you the identified study strands, and then to learn your questions to help us go deeper with the middle school study. And like I said, I am really excited. I think this will help us understand each of the levels of our education system in a deeper way. Dr. Tyson?
Thank you, Dr. Meredith. It's always my pleasure to be here before our esteemed Board of Education. All right. While visiting a country school, the chairman of the Board of Education became provoked at the noise the unruly students were making in the next room. Angerly, he opened the door and grabbed one of the taller boys who seemed to be doing most of the talking. He dragged the boy to the next room and stood him in the corner. A few minutes later, a small boy stuck his head in the room and pleaded, please, sir, may we have our teacher back? He's the master. All right, so our middle school study work session, last time I did a terrible job with the thank yous. So this time, I came, apologies again Jenny and Becky, but I came very prepared this time with the thanks. Desi Kirchhoff, Lisa Meredith, Mike Bogus, Courtney Jaeger, the middle school study group, Project Parkway participants, and all those who are or will become involved in the study at any point. Sorry about that. I think, I think that does it. All right, so our main topics for the middle school study, we have them here. They are five. Individual, individualization or personalization, grading assessment, feedback. Individualization or personalization, grading assessment, feedback, character development and community, curriculum and instruction, and then the last one up there, scheduling, structures, and staffing. And I think that, and really, we have to give the credit here to Mike and Courtney, but even more especially to Courtney in this particular case with these overarching guiding questions. She developed a very nice framework, I think, for fitting these five main topics into a set of overarching guiding questions. So each of the main topics, we go through and we answer these overarching guiding questions. That's the hope. And so, again, we have five. The first overarching guiding question, so we're going to try to answer for each of our main topics. What are the best practices specific to, and then you would just fill in the blank with the main topic. So individualization or personalization, grading assessment, feedback, character development, community. And then we ask the next question. How do I identify best practices of main topic challenge our current realities? So I tried to bold, I think, the important pieces there. Does the way we currently approach the particular main topic lead us to accomplish mission, vision, and learning principles? What aspects of the main topic are site-based and which are handled at the district level? And then what supports and resources are in place with respect to whatever the particular main topic is? So we thought that that was a very nice framework for moving forward with this, with this study of the middle school. I do want to go through though, of course, those are our main, our main topics and our guiding questions. But then within each one, I want you to see what, you know, the committee has explored and what thoughts have come out. So I'm just going to go through quickly and just so you have specific, a specific idea of the specific items that we're going to consider in this study, I just kind of want to go through these. So first of all, though, I did want to say with, okay. So we're on main topic number one, individualization or personalization. And there is this story about a science teacher who said to the class, "Isaac Newton was sitting under a tree when an apple fell on his head, and he discovered gravity. Isn't that wonderful?" And the student, one of the students said, "Well, yes, sir. If he had been sitting in class looking at books like us, he wouldn't have discovered anything." And I think that that makes a good, that really makes a good point here with individualization and personalization because we really tap into experiential learning. And so that's going to come up here as, as we move through some of these items. So on the very top, you're going to see the overarching guiding question. And then underneath, you're going to see some of the main things that we want to take a look at. So current middle school best practices. How do we utilize five middle school buildings to support student learning? Can or should the five middle school buildings be used differently? The next one is, how are those best practices challenging current realities? So how do we best customize the middle school experience? How are we using innovation to meet student needs and interest off-campus? How do we incorporate more experiential learning at the middle school level? And then what is the attention span of a middle school student to switching classes help? Next one. Mission, vision, and learning principles. Do we have enough opportunities for all students? And then does the way we currently meet individual student needs lead to students achieving mission, vision, and learning principles? This is the overarching guiding question referring to site-based versus district level. Among the five middle schools, when and where is standardization appropriate? And then finally, supports and resources. How are we training teachers better when it comes to differentiation, individualization of instruction? And then how do we train the teachers regarding the unique social, emotional, academic needs of a middle school student? Our second main topic, grading assessment and feedback. So again, overarching guiding question, best practice questions. Is the current communication of grades and our achievement to stakeholders effective? What are best grading practices? How do we best measure student growth? How is assessment used to engage our students? Here's the one about challenging current realities. How do we use the citizenship grade? How do we engage parents through Edline and Infinite Campus, engage parents and students? How do we utilize parent conferences, and how do we report student progress? Here's our mission, vision, and learning principles overarching guiding question. Where are the middle schools in the implementation of Parkway's grading practices and beliefs? How do we involve students in the assessment process? How do our assessment practices align to mission, vision, and learning principles? And then do our current grading assessment and feedback practices lead to students achieving mission, vision, and learning principles? What aspects, so this is the one about site-based versus district level again. What decisions are district decisions? Which ones are school, which ones are team decisions? Should there be standardization in how we provide feedback to stakeholders? How is feedback used differently across departments? How do grading practices align vertically and horizontally? How do we align standards-based grading? How should grading assessment and feedback be used to determine student placement? Supports and resources. How does Parkway support teachers who have demonstrated effective implementation of assessment and grading practices? All right, so character development, community. Social studies teacher was in class. George Washington not only chopped down his father's cherry tree, but also admitted to it. Now Louis, do you know why his father didn't punish him? Because George still had the axe in his hand. I'm trying to get him to fit the main topics here. Of course, our student, I mean honesty is a core value in Parkway. Taking an axe, you know, we'd be careful there. Okay, so with character development, community, what are the best practices specific to character development, community? How do we best transition students in and out of middle school? Should specific character groups be counted as an elective class? What do students get out of reflection? How do we incorporate student reflection into the character development? How could we use restorative practices to strengthen our community? How can we intentionally involve stakeholders, like parents and community members? This is the one about challenging current realities. How can we ensure kids understand what a community is? How do middle school teachers feel about character ed? Here's the mission, vision, and learning principles overarching guiding question. How do we incorporate service learning into the educational process? How will we determine if progress is being made in character development? And then do our current efforts to develop character and community lead to students achieving mission, vision, and learning principles? Site-based versus district level. How do building and district initiatives support one another? Supports and resources. What structures need to be in place for mentoring to take place? How do we develop character education curriculum? How do we provide support for teachers who are delivering a character education curriculum? Our fourth main topic is curriculum and instruction. How do we best communicate about curriculum to middle school parents? Should Parkway curriculum and special school district curriculum be aligned? Which instructional models are effective? Here's the one about challenging current realities. How do we provide opportunities for students to transfer content and skills to real-life applications? What role does experiential learning have to play? Is our instruction student-centered? Mission, vision, and learning principles. Do we have the correct course offerings? Is there a guaranteed viable curriculum for middle school? And if so, is it being accomplished through a current model? Do our middle schools prepare students for the digital age? Does our curriculum and instruction provide meaningful experiences for students? Do our curriculum and instruction efforts lead to students achieving mission, vision, and learning principles? Site-based versus district level. Should there be a common model district-wide? Supports and resources. Are teachers prepared? Do we support teachers whenever there is curricular change? Do we have the materials to support the middle-level student engaged in a rigorous curriculum? Are we providing teachers the necessary training and technology? Is our technology equally distributed across disciplines? And do we have the technology to support students learning in the digital age? And then our final main topic is all about scheduling, structures, and staffing. How can we best support co-teaching and co-taught classes in all subject areas? What does the research say about block scheduling at the middle schools? What interventions can be offered for struggling students? What about for accelerating students? Should we refine the middle school staffing model? Effectiveness of double communication arts, effectiveness of daily PE and health, effectiveness of the eight-period day. Should the replacement curriculum class, should the replacement class curriculum be aligned to Parkway's curriculum? How can we best push for rigor while being sure to keep rigorous instruction meaningful? How can we close our achievement gaps? And then to what extent do current structures, scheduling, and staffing lead to students achieving mission, vision, and learning principles? Is the middle school philosophy interpreted in the same manner throughout the district? And are we currently maximizing resources to meet the needs of our students? How effective is our professional support? Very comprehensive. But we are interested in the Board of Education. If there's anything out there that we haven't thought of studying, we're interested in your feedback. Just don't throw it.
Quick questions. Somewhere there, I'd like to see how we weave in the use of Naviance with students in, in middle school. So that that becomes an effective tool that guides and helps them and points them towards either college or something else. And the other thing I've expressed to Dr. Marty, my concern that somehow, as early as possible, we introduce them to the concepts of experiential learning and maybe even South Tech or other things that might become available to Parkway in our curriculum.
Thank you.
What about the guidance component? Along with the Naviance, I know that's part of it, but it seems like there should be a guidance component in terms of guidance counselors, and this may be part of the character ed thing where.
That's what first came to mind, but you're right, maybe a special look at guidance.
Right, but some emphasis placed on, on the guidance component. Also, the socialization, extracurricular activities, I think that's an integral part of middle school. I thought I saw pieces of what that might be in the questions, but I think there should be some emphasis on, are we really offering opportunities for students outside the classroom that enrich their lives and also develop additional skills, leadership, et cetera?
Sure.
It wasn't specifically mentioned, but it kind of was alluded to about the honors program in middle school. And I've kind of lost track. Are they all, are all the middle schools on the same page with that? Or does each one do things a little bit differently with regard to that?
Don't answer, don't answer. That goes to Nathan for the list, right?
Okay, sure, sure. But you know what I'm saying?
Yes.
Okay.
Or whoever's taking notes, whoever's keeping notes. Anything else?
I think one of the other interesting ideas that would come out of this is looking at the homework and how much homework is assigned, what homework is assigned, is it effective? We looked at flipped classroom settings last year in some classes, and is that still a model that's being considered in the, in the middle school curriculum? And how, and I guess maybe some of that might get into individualization and personalization as well, as to what's the best way for a child to learn. But just looking at the homework situation and what is the best for the middle school students with that. And I, and the other comment is just how do, how do we keep our middle schoolers engaged in the curriculum, wanting to learn, wanting to do the work, not feeling overwhelmed, and helping them? How best can we help them along when they get to that point of feeling overwhelmed without burning them out so soon?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Couple. How do we know if we have enough data, enough years of data? So some of the things we've been doing for three years, some of the things we've been doing for four years. So we're going to look back at the data, the double com arts, the everyday PE, things like that, PLCs. How do we know if what we're looking at is giving us the real picture of the change that, that is taking place? Is it because of those changes or some, some other reason? So is three, four years enough data? Do we still need five middle schools? That sounds like that would be right up your alley, right? Will we need five middle schools in the future? Dr. Marty's told me that we're already studying the high school credit for courses taken in middle school, Algebra I, et cetera, et cetera. So I think that would be a nice, whatever that committee comes up with should probably be entered into your report. And then just anecdotally, as a parent, I've always heard that the middle school years are the toughest years. So I personally didn't experience that. So what is the social, emotional health of our middle schoolers? And what are we doing to maximize their social, emotional health? Also, we've been talking for a long time about students in eighth grade need more guidance and direction in preparing their high school course selection. I'm not really sure how it's done now, but my question is, is do we need to refine how that course selection process is handled? Are they getting the right advice? Do they know all of their options? Or is it kind of a crapshoot?
You mean eighth going into ninth? Eighth grade going into ninth?
Eighth grade going into, going into high school. And then also, I, I understand from people who've participated that the Welcome to Middle School and Welcome to High School, Summer School Experience classes have been really helpful drawing a bridge between the lower level and the higher level buildings. And right now, that's just limited to summer school. And I'm wondering if there's a possibility that we could have some kind of a program within the end of their experience in fifth or eighth grade that could help bridge that experience for them without having to do it in the summer, because not everybody's able to do it in the summer. And I think they can start their year so much more comfortably if, if they have a, you know, more than one or two visits to the building in their, in their history. So would that, would that be possible? What might be the benefits of something like that?
Just the topic of transition.
Uh huh.
You know, I think broadly speaking, I mean, I think that's, there's, there's a lot of things that you and Chris and others have talked about that are kind of in that transition.
Right, right. Okay, good. Thank you. I think that's all I have.
All right. It's been a pleasure. Thank you.
Marty, do we have a new emcee for appreciation night?
You like it? Great.
No, Nathan?
Never mind.
You might be working yourself into a job. Are you available in April sometime? Maybe you got a partner, yeah. I just, thanks so much. Your topic additions, I, I saw Courtney and Dr. Bogus, Dr. Jaeger.
Doctor and doctor.
Doctor, doctor. I think, I think, I think they saw themselves go like, ooh, got more topics. But I think what you just indicated is there's so much that really is so key to the middle level. And Lisa kind of, Dr. Meredith, another doctor, Dr. Meredith, kind of talked about, you know, there's been about 20, 25 years now of a significant switch in middle level. I remember being a little bit a part of that, and it really was kind of caused by what many educators thought was an attempt to, or over a period of time, we had allowed kind of the junior high model. You know, the junior high model, meaning our high school schedule was kind of brought down to junior high. And you were part of this, I'm sure. And was that really developmentally appropriate? So there's been a lot of excitement over the last many years. I think middle-level educators have probably seen more changes than any other location. But I also say it's really refreshing to still, you know, people believing that we, we can do better for a middle level. It's such a time of change. And honestly, some of the things that you were talking about, the transition or experiential opportunities. If a student can, and a parent can come out of that middle school experience still excited and still vibrant about learning, I think that's what we want to see, because we want to see people approach the high school. But, but it's doing the right kind of things in middle level. So I'm really excited about this study. I don't, I don't, you know, think we're going to, you know, answer all the questions, but we really have an opportunity to, to I think, impact really quite honestly from this study, looking both ways. What we could do more of at elementary potentially, and then what, well, how's this going to change our high school? Because we don't want these studies all to be in isolation. They should impact what happens here, what we're going to eventually look at in terms of high school, and maybe what we would expect more in terms of our elementary program, getting students prepared for middle school.
Are we doing these level evaluations, one per year?
Yes, yes. So I'm not sure. What's the plan for next year? Is it high, high school? So, so, you know, we'll go into high school and then come back to elementary, and then Lisa said early childhood. So our effort is to, you know, there's a lot of items up there. We may not, you know, be able to do justice for all those, but we will be able to, you know, perhaps continue studying some over the next couple of years so they can be part of the next round. Because we want to really see this in a cycle approach.
So when do we expect this report?
May.
May. Okay.
This May?
This May.
How are we going to bring the staff into the process? Because I, that's pretty critical. One, they're good advisors. I mean, they're good resource. But also, you know, any of the.
the changes that are taking place, it'd be good that they're involved on the, the front end and also. So, I assume that there'll be faculty involved in the process.
So, they're already, so the process is already starting really early, faculty members, and then here at Central Middle School, and they are the ones who generated the main topics and the rest of the internet, and then we have divided into task forces for each of those guiding areas of the copy areas, and then we staff administrators and families and students involved in the process for each of the topics, and really structure
Gentlemen, it's spent a lot of time in middle level, so he's probably as good a resource as any in the room.
That's my passion.
Great, thank you all. We look forward to your report in May. Fifteen point zero work session, there's none tonight. Sixteen point zero call for special meeting, there is none. Seventeen point zero, next scheduled closed session, the next anticipated closed session will be held on October twenty-second, two thousand fourteen at six o'clock PM at Central Middle School. Details of the closed session will be posted within twenty-four hours of the anticipated meeting. Eighteen point zero recess, we're going to recess the public meeting, and nineteen point zero, we are going to resume our closed meeting. Twenty point zero, may I have a motion in a second to adjourn the regular meeting? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Motion carries seven zero. At this time, we will adjourn to closed session. Thank you, everybody, for coming, and we'll see you all soon.